Selected public spaces using community resources. And we've expanded our mission to include improving the look of the town by removing trash and litter on Ship Shape Day.
So you have a group of people that maintain all of the islands and all of the public areas around town? What are they, 20?
Traffic islands and some other gardens. The library, we've had a garden. And the pier, we have a garden. And Egypt Beach, we have a garden. And I'm maybe forgetting one or two.
How many are there in total, like 20 something?
Twenty-six right now that we have people taking care of. We have two inactive ones, and we've lost one this year.
And you did a great job with one of your brochures.
Oh, did you see?
That actually shows the people that actually maintain whatever the island has to be. So they're, maybe you have a copy of it there?
Yes, I have. I'm going to put some out in the town hall in case somebody wants to.
I hope you can zoom in on that. But it's, it literally shows the people that take care of what island it is. And it's a-
Yes, and it talks a little bit about them. They are incredible, these people. Maura's one of them, who do this, summer after summer. Plant, weed, water. Last summer watering was, of course, the biggest challenge.
Take their life in their own hands.
Yes, that too. We hope they're careful and we offer any kind of safety equipment that they want.
And then you also manage Ship Shape Day.
And we manage Ship Shape Day. And we also offer the merchants in the harbor and in North Situate and in Green Bush a voucher to help them to pray the costs of putting flowers at their businesses to make the commercial districts more attractive for our summer visitors and shoppers. It's a $50 voucher. We've been doing that program since before I came to beautification, so that's longstanding. And then Ship Shape Day is a big thing. And Ship Shape Day, this will be April 29th this year, so mark your calendars. And we will be recognizing 50 years of public support for our spring cleanup this year.
Are we doing anything different?
Oh, we might have popcorn, balloons. We want to thank people, but, you know, we'll give them a sticker perhaps, I don't know. There might be some surprises.
It's a great event, and it's so well-run. I mean, you literally come up to the tables out here, they give you a section, they give you a bag, they give you gloves, they give you a little picker-upper if you want that, and-
Yes.
You're allocated a small section of town to help clean up. You guys do a great job with that.
Yes, thanks very much. So our budget, we asked for $1,000 more this year, $21,500. And because we have to buy bags for Ship Shape Day again, and bags can be kind of expensive. And we wanted to do that without affecting our other costs, expenditures rather is what I should say.
So you requested $21,500, and there's $20,500 in the budget?
Yes.
And your budget has gone up over the last-
Yes.
-10 years. Used to be about $15,000 in 2011, and it's slowly gotten up to the $20,500. And it's-
Yes, when we used up the MBTA funds for maintaining the railroad crossing islands, we had a bump. You know, we had to take over the cost of that.
Right.
So we had a bump there.
So we truly get our bang for our buck with your budget.
Thank you.
And you guys do a great job with the limited funds that you get. And obviously, you give out those funds to merchants as well to help them, you know, put it there.
Yes, we try to share, so.
Great. Any questions?
Just two.
Yep.
So Donna, was that $1,000 that was basically based on bags?
We do have to-
Or is it any additional islands that were included?
No.
Okay.
No, we have to replace bags, and that's about what we bought the last time, was about $1,700 for bags. And so we changed to smaller bags. We hoped, the last time we bought bags, we thought they would last four or five years. But we changed to smaller-sized bags because people couldn't, we would fill the green bag and the big bag, and then they couldn't drag it, it'd get too heavy. But the thing about smaller bags is they take twice as many, you know, use twice as many. So it's only been two years since we bought them the last time. Well, it'll be three years, I think, by the time we, for this budget. So we need to go back and buy the bags again.
And then my other one is just sort of a, at the Conservation Commission tonight, we were talking about all the trash in the rivers and the streams that are next to the roads, and I was talking to Frank on how maybe to incorporate sort of an aspect of your Ship Shape Day to partner with them, to get volunteers to help us go in along the sides of the roads with boots and whatnot into our streams as well.
The NSRWA used to do that, right?
Yeah.
And they, I don't know why they're not continuing that.
So I don't know, I mean, I don't know if we want to connect with Frank Snow a little bit and see if we can coordinate efforts on the same day to do that.
Yeah, typically, they do-
I thought they did that.
They did some in the harbor, too. Remember they-
I thought they did it the same day.
They tend to. Sometimes they overlap, and I think in the past, sometimes they'd be like different weekends, but-
Maybe they just don't come to us.
The harbor, the Harbor Master organized one.
Yep.
But theirs is very, very much dependent on the tides. And so it only occasionally coincides with our hours.
You're right, okay.
Yeah. And then NSRWA does the wetlands and the other side of that bridge, the other side of Edward Foster Road. And they didn't do one last year, and I haven't heard anything about this year, so.
So who can reach out? Lauren, can you reach, who should reach out to them?
Well, I can reach out to them.
Okay.
I'd be glad to.
Great.
And to Frank.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just want to thank you, Donna, for everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And happy anniversary. A couple months late, but you deserve, you deserve that wish as well.
We get a whole year full of that.
Fifty years for those of you that weren't here two months ago, so.
Donna, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next budget we'll go over is historical, which is number 691.
I thought you were talking about her and Alice. What are you gonna do?
I guess.
Up not the 15 years. Ship Shape Day.
Hey, guys.
David, Allison.
Allison, David, how are you? Just if you could say who you are.
Yeah, I'm David Ball, president of the Situate Historical Society.
Allison Short, I'm a trustee of the Historical Society.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
So Dave, you want to talk about your accomplishments or goals or anything?
Yeah, I'll just go over the goals, just so everybody in the audience is clear and out in TV land. The Situate Historical Society is dealing with 14 buildings of historical nature. Eight of those buildings are owned by the town of Situate, and we oversee those buildings for the town. So the Historical Society submits a budget every year. It's called Historical Buildings Number 691. And I'll just read off the town-owned historical buildings, because that's what this budget is about, not what we own. The town does not fund anything of the society-owned buildings. So the buildings that are owned by the town are the Cudworth House, Situate Lighthouse, Mann House, Mann, Mann House Farm Barn, the Massachusetts Humane Society Boathouse, Lawson Tower, Lawson Gates, and the Bates Houses. The mission of the society is to maintain these important structures for the future generations, to provide educational opportunities at these properties, so the public has a good understanding of the role these buildings played in the development and the history of the town.
I think you guys do a great job with it. You know, I wish it was open more, but when it is, you know, Heritage Days, huge turnout for all of the buildings, and there's a couple other days during the year that you're having open, too.
Right. We're very fortunate to have a good group of volunteers. Takes about 50 volunteers to open all the buildings during Heritage Days, both Saturday and Sunday. So it's a lot of people that are dedicated to doing this. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be able to do that.
And your budget is the same as it was last year?
Essentially the same.
Yep, just a little under $14,000. And that's basically electricity, insurance, that sort of stuff.
That's correct. I can say that, I'm quite sure that next year, we're going to have to come in with a higher amount for maintenance. This year, the maintenance number is $6,000 out of that total of just under 14. For example, we're going to have to be doing painting down at the Humane Boathouse this spring, and that's going to be probably $25,000 to $3,500, somewhere in that range. That's half of it right there. And there's other buildings that are going to need some attention in that regard as well. And community preservation funding is not really eligible for that kind of work. It's more restoration than actual maintenance, so just as a heads-up for that.
Have you thought of contacting somebody? We went to the Eagle Scout.
I did.
Sean went to an Eagle Scout presentation this weekend. Have you spoken to them at all to see if they can do any of these projects? Because they're always looking for good projects to do. The Eagle Scouts?
Well, not for paintings, but not so much.
Yeah, it has to be a new project.
There may be other things, I don't know. I don't know what's on your hit list, but-
We have plenty of Eagle Scouts.
Yeah, it's unbelievable. We have had, since 1996, 23 or 24 Eagle Scout projects. It's been over one a year. We've been very fortunate. We have one that's just going to be installed coming up in a couple of weeks. Yeah, so we utilize them, and we've been very lucky with that.
Any questions for them?
No, no.
I just have one question, Dave. Is there any way you can look into, and this is off pace of the budget, but we're having some problems scheduling stuff, because we have all these buildings that aren't quite open yet. And I know in the past, we've used some of the historical buildings to have meetings and stuff. And a lot of committees have come to us saying that they're having trouble finding places to schedule meetings and times that are convenient for them. I don't know if there's any way that you can talk to see if we could get Gar Hall or Littlewood Schoolhouse or these other buildings that we've used in the past for the next couple of months until we get the library open, until we get the public, you know, where the other workable space will be available.
Yeah, the schoolhouse is not available because, in part, because of that major project we have going there with the archive space. The community preservation group is meeting at GAR, and advisory is, we've had recreation on there for some of their programs.
But if you can see, because I know it's really limited, it's like Monday nights or, you know, it's very limited in terms of the time. But anything we can do for the town committees for the next six months, I think would be a huge help, because when the schools get open, when all these other buildings get open, we're going to have an abundant amount of space. But right now, you know, Pier 44, all these things will be freed up. But right now, we're really in a bind, so anything you can do to be helpful would be great. Anything else?
No.
Great. Thanks for coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren, can you follow up with Dave, just on the availability of space?
Sure.
Let's see.
Counsel on Aging, too.
Are you ready? Counsel on Aging is next. It's number 541.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And now, are you?
I'm great, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to start by telling us a little bit about your major accomplishments and what you're looking to do and?
Well, I'm happy to talk about our work at the senior center and certainly answer any questions. So I have a few numbers. We had over 8,000 participant check-ins for 2016 for our programs generally. That does break down for a single month to over 900. Now, that's duplicated, so unduplicated, that means we had 250 or more people come into the building or buildings to participate. So that's activities, events, participation.
250 total individuals?
Individuals in a month's time.
Per month.
Oh, per month.
In a month's time. The 8,000 was-
8,000 unique, or is that-
Pardon me?
Are those 8,000 individuals?
No.
No.
Okay.
So that's an unduplicated number of just participation check-ins. Every time they walk in the door, they scan, we hope. And we know that's less than is actual, because we do try to get everybody, but there are other, there are times we definitely don't have that data.
So would it be safe to say, if 250 people use it a month?
Yeah.
I'm sure a lot of those people use it every month, but there's-
Right, absolutely.
Maybe up to 1,000 individuals?
Yes, that's exactly what I would say, yes. That is safe to say. Rides for 2016, so transportation, 6,840 for the year. That's 230 riders for the year, so that they're taking that many rides, whether it's local in Situate or out-of-town medical as well. Over a month's time, 635 rides, that's 80 riders. Services, that's on the outreach side primarily, and I just have the month, a particular month, 106 connections. So oftentimes, they're seeing maybe the same client for several different reasons or multiple times. But that, over that month, the particular month I looked at, was 60 in a month's time for outreach. So overall, number of seniors we served in one month, almost 400, and probably over 400, but we can say that we had seen that many.
That's great.
You know, 16 exercise wellness classes that we offer, whether the few at the senior center, and 11 of them are off-site at two different locations. Three recreation programs, you know, pickleball and badminton, and they're both at Jenkins Gym, but then softball, you know about that. 70 people have participated in both the pickleball and badminton, and actually, pickleball is greater. It's newer, and people, it's really increased of late. And softball has upwards to 80. Two varieties of seminar-style lifelong learning courses, so we have sort of an ongoing with a very prolific instructor. Every six weeks, he comes up with another topic and gets easily 20 to 25 people coming in for those. But also, we did a classical music series just to try to offset that and maybe bring in another, another element. Two to three café talks per month, 120 people attended those, so oftentimes, you are seeing the same people come in, but the topics are always different. So whether it's informational, outreach-oriented, insurance, or could be just hobby, leisure, special interest in and around Situate, so we get different speakers and hope to bring in a broader base of our clients. We did four different evidence-based wellness programs, so that's six to eight weeks of weekly participation on a variety of health and wellness topics, all grant-funded, so no charge for those. So the programs are often volunteer-led, many are now. Some of the activities we have at the center or the recreation, both the pickleball and badminton are kind of self-led, I guess, lately. We tried to go for a while, but couldn't keep that up. I couldn't keep up with them. Some are self-sustaining, so they pay in, the instructor gets paid by the person, and that's how it works. Or others are grant-funded, maybe we request some donations, or it's free. So the tai chi that I happen to lead is free, and that's nice, and I may start asking for donations, because it's been ongoing now for three years. But, and it's really valuable, I like to do that. We did get some extra grant funding to subsidize a new program, Balance for Life, so we offer that twice a week. And she's up to, between the two classes she offers, there's easily 16 to 20 or more people in each of those exercise classes. And that happens at St. Luke's right now.
Right.
Just to shift a little bit, our outreach efforts with the Hoarding Response Team, that resulted in an additional support group that gets run once at the senior center, once at St. Mary's, and once at the Congregational Church. So that has been primarily funded through the mass housing grant that they got through the committee work. But also, we're going to subsidize that through some of our program-revolving account, because we needed to be able to do that to continue it. So I thought that was important. We did a recent initiative, and luckily, the winter didn't really pan out the way it could have, which is a good news, but we decided to have some buckets imprinted with the town of Situate seal, Counsel on Aging, and also the high school interact club, which is the rotarian, young rotarian group. But sand buckets for the winter with a scoop, and the interact club kids went to the DPW site, filled them with sand, put the scoops in, and delivered them to, at this point, we had about 25 seniors get them before the second storm, not the first storm, and there hasn't been another storm. So we got 50 buckets, and we could still give them out, but we may just save them for next year. But it was a nice idea. It came down from the Executive Office of Elder of Fears. We thought it might be good, and it was. They're very appreciative of that. And the interact club students happened to, that's a great intergenerational connection and partnership that we have with them, so they also do a monthly tech time for us. So seniors come in to get help with iPads, iPhones, laptops sometimes. And they also have been doing an annual dinner and game night, which is the end of this month. So it's been a nice relationship. That's something else we're happy to be able to say.
Right.
So I know it's been said before, probably last year, you know, we're doing a lot with a little. I know it's no secret, the challenges that we, everybody's aware of the challenges that we, you know, try to overcome and meet and continue to get frustrated by, so space, parking.
Well, I think we all agree that you guys-
We all agree.
Do a great job with the resources that you have.
Mm-hmm.
And I know it's a priority for all of us up here and in St. Rotul as well, you know, that we've got to get you some better spaces to do your activities, so.
Well, I'm grateful for the feasibility study ongoing currently. I'm grateful for what the Adaptive Building Reuse Committee came up with and took so much time to, you know, propose, so that's all promising.
And we're hoping that, you know, that that goes further along and we get down around, get in a place for you to go. But also, with the library moving out, we're going to have Pier 44 available. I would say the Situate, I can't remember how we phrase those words. What's it, the Situate?
Harbor.
Harbor, yeah. Harbor Community Building. And also Gates, you know, when they move into the high school in the fall, and then that space, there'll be space available there, too. So hopefully, your programming won't suffer, and we'll be able to expand a little bit, so. Want to get into the numbers?
Sure.
So your budget last year was $221,000.
Mm-hmm.
It's level-funded at $221,000 again?
Unbelievable. Well, I mean, a few things increased, but it's easy to level funds, you know, given it's really the operation of the center, really, which hasn't so much changed.
Right. A little bit more for equipment.
Yeah.
A little bit less in some of the expenses, but overall.
Well, the equipment, we want to get in on the, tie into the phone system upgrade. That's what that is for. We are adding 10 hours to Jill, who's the administrative assistant, but through the formula grant, but that would make her full-time, and we really, we could really use that, so.
Right. Any questions? Linda? Great, Linda, thanks for coming in. Thanks for the explanation. You do a great job.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you, Lyx.
Any questions from the audience? No? Great.
Want to skip rec and move on?
Want to go to plan? Rec, is rec here? Rec is department number 630.
Good evening, everybody.
Maura, Nick, how are you guys?
Good, how are you?
So why don't we start by you telling us, well, Linda, just put through all her numbers. I'm sure you have some in terms of the programming that you do as well.
Yeah, we have a couple. They seem to be repetitive over the years. We, our department runs approximately 350 programs per year. We have now two full-time employees. This is Nick Lombato, my assistant director. He's, he came in on July 18th, and he was a breath of fresh air when he walked through the door. We had a little bit of, my 20-year, over 20-year co-director, she was director for so long, she resigned, and is to stay with her family. And so when Nick came in, I was very happy to see him walk through the door, and he's been a tremendous help.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We also had a little change with our clerk and our field coordinator, and all the staff that has been replaced has been wonderful, and they work 110 percent. So we're very hap, I'm very happy with my staff, and I'm very proud of them. I'm going to let Nick take a little bit of this.
Yeah, so we're responsible for two accounts, the recreation revolving and also the beach sticker revolving accounts. The recreation revolving is based on all of our program fees and field fees. This account is used to pay for our part-time staff, as well as to purchase any program needs, minimal needs, such as like any needed equipment for the programs, materials, et cetera. The beach, the beach sticker revolving account is used for our lifeguard payroll, supplies, equipment, and costs associated with beaches, and also other departments use that, or any other related expenses for beaches.
And one, another important factor of our department, we're in charge of the lifeguard services. So the services, not only, the kids don't, well, young people, they don't only save lives, but they, they look at the overall safety of the beaches, which we've incorporated a shock protocol and how to follow that. They follow it to its heat. They're always looking at riptides. They do a fantastic job. We had a great summer last summer. I can say that now, because it's over, and I don't usually breathe a word until Labor Day. But I was very proud of our lifeguard staff. We have a majority of them coming back, but we still are always looking for lifeguards, so I'm putting a little plug in that, we are looking for lifeguard applications. We moved out of the high school. That was our first accomplishment, and with the help of the Situate Public Schools, they moved us successfully over to Gates, excuse me, over to Jenkins. Eventually, we might be going to Gates in the fall, and we're looking forward to that. Not might, but I think we are definitely going. Yeah, the school did pay for a lot of our expenses to go over there, because they were putting a new school together, and it's come out beautifully, so we're very happy with where we are, and Gates has been more than welcoming to us. CPC projects, we had a couple accomplished this year and finished. The skateboard park was, has been done. We're moving very quickly right now on Central Field. We're out into the bidding process on that, and we've been working on that. And the Cape Cod Mercury's last summer were, were used, and that was from CPC money, and very successful. And we were also awarded capital for 420 sailboats that are going to be delivered shortly. They're individually done, and we're almost ready to pick them up. I think they're being shipped at the end of next month. We're very excited. I guess it's a bigger, it's a big deal when they come in, they come in in a big, big, huge truck, and it's something to see.
We also had hired a new lifeguard director last year. She's created a new rotating schedule, and she's enforced how critical it is for these guards to be committed to their jobs and the importance of safety for our community and beachgoers, so she's done an excellent job.
I know we can all, they do a great job. I mean, how many, they had a handful of saves last year, and there's a bunch of incidents where they, you know, these are just teenagers for the most part, and college kids-
Yes.
Who really pay a, you know, critical part in our-
And the way they look at it is, it's my job, that's what I'm supposed to do. We do give them extensive training. We don't put them out there to hang out, to drive. We, we have somebody come in and train them, and they participate, and they pay attention, and they put all the tools that are given to them on that day, and they take it with them every day.
If you ever doubt it, just go watch them when they pick them. They, you go up to the Y in Hanover, and they have to go through the test, and I have attended that, and it's pretty, pretty neat.
Yeah, we, now we go to the tennis clubs, it's a little closer to town, so they, we use a tennis club in town to use it once they get a pool. And yes, it's, it's an extensive process when we pick them. I agree. The CIT program last summer was very successful. It was a pilot program that was sponsored by a donation from a personal, a person in town, and also the Course Foundation, and that was to oversee the volunteer program. We have about 80 volunteers in the summertime, and we included, it was a very included program, inclusive meaning anybody of any abilities could come and volunteer. It was successful. And so we're now going to increase it to, go out to all our programs. We only concentrated on two camps last summer, and we're going to spread it out to all our camps this summer. We're very excited about that.
We have increased our programming for adults and children. We started a K-31 Little Shooters Basketball Program, which has had, I think, over 200 kids participate, yeah.
Even more than that, yeah.
And also our Little Kickers Soccer Program, the same thing, a couple hundred kids within the past two years, so we're pretty excited about that. We also started kind of a new spinning program, adult spinning program. We open it up for unlimited amount of times as you can go and it's, the fee is just $100.
It's competitive with all the other clubs in town. There's their summertime price and we've, we can afford to, to do it in all year round, so it has increased our enrollment tremendously.
I've heard great things about it and people love that flexibility.
And they love Gates being over there.
Yeah, that's currently old Rec Gates and the fitness room down there, so.
Yeah, they're enjoying themselves over there already, so can't wait to go over and join them. The Course Foundation, again, because we partner with them in quite a few programs, especially in the summer, the maritime program was increased to two weeks last summer instead of one week and that was successful and sold out.
The Field Subcommittee to the Recreation Commission was created to investigate new areas for fields, as you may know. The field coordinator and subcommittee are working closely with each other to ensure the fields are maintained and discovering new areas or using areas that we haven't really been using for field space, which we definitely need, so.
Well, it's been a little challenge because a couple of the fields have been taken away due to the growth of the town and the new, the new buildings, but our field coordinator, Ann Vignani, has done a tremendous job. We meet constantly with the DPW, try to work out a maintenance plan or a plan to put in action on how to, to put the, the existing fields in, in top shape so we can put the youth out there. Our fields, as you probably know, are only permitted to nonprofit Situate-based youth organization, except for the turf. That's the only one that is rented.
Do, do we maintain the ball, the Little League ball field or is that the Little League?
Little League. Little League does most of the maintenance, but it's town, it's town property.
The town does do some.
Actually, you're right, they cut the high school ones, they cut gates. It's usually just Green Bush and Roach.
The one down by the water department?
Right, Green Bush. They, Little League. Saint Mary's.
They, they like their, well, I don't, they like their ball fields to be meticulous and that's okay and, and so they pay for it and they like it done that way. But we do do some of the.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to use, you know, find use for the Heatherby Dock Field and, you know, the Purple Dinosaur, just because they really haven't been used. So we're trying to make use of them while, you know, other fields are being worked on or.
Everybody's improvising, everyone's pitching in and everybody understands, so, you know, we're working on it.
There's more teams and less fields, so it's, it's a challenge. But we've got, you know, there's limited space in town where you can move these fields. We did buy the, will be buy or swap the property over in the West End. I know we're looking into that and there's a few, there's only a few other parcels that really are significant size. That's great. Want to get to the numbers?
Not yet, one second. Just before we get to that, I just, being liaison to recreation for quite a few years and now Toni, she has it and I know we all feel the same way, I just have to say, there was num-- one number you might have missed. How many students, how many youngsters, middle-aged, older people go through your program? I think you missed that. How many thousands?
Each year?
Yes.
Over 4,500?
Right.
Well, that's 4,500 participants, but everybody that walks through the door, that number?
Right.
Is 52,000 times that somebody walks through the recreation door per year. To use like spinning, if they buy spinning, they're, you know, it's, it's just every time they open the door to, to use recreation.
And, and I say that as, you know, because the town administrator and I had a conversation about a week or so ago. This is one of, you're one of those areas where I think Situate is far ahead of a lot of other towns and it's, you know, because of efforts like you, Jen, and, and a lot of people and I just want to thank you very much. I've attended those meetings for many years and I know Situate is a much better place because of our recreation department. We don't even have to look outside this room. When we started the golf program, the someone's son has a wonderful career ahead of him because of the golf program the recreation provided him. Now sailing, that could be the next thing. How do we know where these, you know, kids are gonna go, so.
Well, I do know a little bit about sailing. There are some people that go to college on sailing scholarships.
Yep, yep, and, and I don't. I, you know, I just know, when I helped over there, and I'm gonna say it again, those signups, people got there at four o'clock in the morning to sign up and didn't open till eight. That was one of the funnest things I ever did, to, to help out, but I just, I just had to say that because Jen used to say, you know, percentage of the budget for what children go through. And this is one, this is just one of a few, you know, we just heard from notification. So I just had to say that, sorry.
Thank you, Sean.
You guys do a great job. Last year's budget was $139,000 and this year's budget is $149,000. That increase is at the part-time.
It's mostly due to the contract.
All right. It's just a contract increase, right, it's in payroll. And other than that, it's level funded. Your plan is to move into Gates. You'll have more space there and you'll be closer to the, some of the programs that you're running.
Yes.
And I think we all agree that that's a good move for the program, so.
It'll be a lot easier for us to, you know, just have our own space and, you know, not have to ask if we can use this or not, but it'll be good.
And accessibility, I mean, the schools now have to be locked up, so it'll be a little better having it, the people will have easier access to us.
So I was talking to somebody this past weekend, getting gas down Front Street, and they're at the middle school and they said they're gonna miss their view from their window looking out over Lawson, the tower and the Godworth and they're saying it's a real pretty view. Said Rec Department will get it and it'll be nice. So just to give you an idea, it's gonna be nice.
Yeah, we're very excited.
From a views perspective, we'll work on the interior as you get in there, so.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience?
Excuse me, Chen Han Chris Rowe. Has any thought been given to putting the lifeguards under the purview of the fire department? Because it is a public safety issue. And now that they have any public safety building and media hall, et cetera, et cetera, I'm wondering, has any thought ever been given to putting this public safety issue of the lifeguards under the purview of the fire department?
I don't think so. I've never, I've never heard of it before.
No, I haven't.
Is it something that someone might like to do? Because recreation does a phenomenal job and sometimes you can end up doing so many things. And this is, as was pointed out early on in this presentation, that this is truly a public safety aspect, so.
Think about it, that's an interesting idea.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there another here? Yes?
Yes, Andrea Hunt, Neil Mallow. I just wanted to thank you about the sailing program. My son did do the sailing program along that sailing at the United States Naval Academy, along that going up the coast and teaching, he was sailing all the way up to Canada and back and it was, it was our program that started.
Okay, nice to know, I didn't know that.
Getting back to that sailing program, when I have gone to register grandchildren before, it has been a very tight time to get in and make sure that they can get part of the program because it fills up very quickly. Is there any opportunity at all for the Recreation Department to look to maybe add more boats and more trainers so that it wouldn't be quite so full? Is that?
Well, I think it's a matter of space in the harbor, number one, where we would put them. We're over there at the Marine Center. I, I wanna thank the town, they have supported us with the Mercuries and the new 420s, so that should help us increase a little bit, but we run from eight in the morning to three in the afternoon and then we start again at 3:15 and go to 5:30 and then from 5:30 we start adult classes till about 7:30 and by then we've run out of light. So, and we run, we run it four or five days a week, I guess if we spill into the weekend.
And I've seen how it fills up. I didn't know what the space constraints were, whether or not there was any availability to hire on it anymore or buy it anymore to help fill that or not. Just a curious question.
Maura, how do you, how do you schedule it? Is it, are they monthly signups or is it a, like, is it a month? Is it two-week sessions or four-week sessions?
So we're a little different than the other clubs in town, meaning the yacht club and the boat club and we, our Mercury program is a Learn to Sail and that's a one week and we fill that all summer long. The 420s, the next phase that you go into, which is a two-man boat, and it's, it's what the high school uses for racing, that's what they would use for racing, so it's almost like we're a feeder team to the high school.
And how many of those do you have?
It's all summer long.
No, 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 I mean how many 420s, yeah.
420s, right now we have six and we're replacing them, well, they're kind of dilapidated, so the town offered to buy us some, so we are.
Who ones this summer?
Six, we buy them in fleets of six.
So I think that's part of the issue, right, is we just don't have additional boats either?
And the harbor doesn't have a lot of space for us. Our Mercuries are in the water, they, they have a big keel underneath, so they stay in. And our 420s are out on the Outer Harbor and they're on their own dock, so they're out there, so we have to transfer them out in, in small chase boats. Yeah, I'd love to increase, I just, you know.
Yeah? Well, it sounds like you're pretty packed. You're using all the sunlight that you can.
Yeah, and I think we offer the, the opportunity for everybody in town to get a taste of sailing.
Do you know how many we turn away, you know, to?
We hardly ever turn away people, it's just that their time schedule doesn't fit, so sometimes they're not allowed to, they, they can't make their time schedule fit ours. But we usually will try to get everybody in who really wants to get in.
Right, and then the wait lists kind of pick up once the programs are full, so. We have to limit it to about, I think the Mercuries is what, 12 or 15?
The Mercuries are 15 and the 420s are 12.
For each.
For each session.
Yeah, for each session. So we do a morning and afternoon session, so that's 30 kids, right, in a day for Mercury each week.
Yeah, you can't do much more than that because you can't just keep adding boats for one instructor to go out on a launch to watch them as well, so it becomes a safety issue. You almost have to double it up, like double everything up if you're gonna keep expanding, have two launches to go out.
And we use the Maritime Center for the 420 program and we use the Mass Humane Building for the, for the really drop off into the Mercury program. So while the classes are going on, we spend about a half hour to an hour on classes and they have a curriculum they follow and then they go out and they sail, weather permitting.
Hen?
Interest in boats. Last year CPC wanted to refund a number of boats and it was shut down. And a letter has been written, which I believe you all have seen, because it is recreation and the waterfront communities, hopefully will be getting together to go forward to CPC and state to revamp what we can pay for with CPC funds. And, you know, we can pay for playgrounds, which is on dry land, but can we pay for playgrounds that's on the water? So it's something that is being looked into.
Yep, we all agree with you that, for those who don't know, we, we tried to get some boats bought through CPC and someone brought CPC's attention and CPC said that they were disallowed and we couldn't buy them with CPC funds because they didn't consider water recreation, so the town ended up buying them. But, great, Maura, you do a great job.
Thank you.
Nick, you do a great job. You know, we service a ton of children and adults and with programming with a, you know, pretty slender budget and it's because of the good people that we have in the town that do work. Any else?
Nope.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Nick, next year you can do it for Maura, you know, Maura can be at home watching it.
I like the tag team effect.
Yeah, yeah, on cue.
The next budget is $175, it's planning. Hi Laura.
Hey Toni, how are you?
How are you?
Hi.
Well, I know you've done a lot, but if you can kind of give us a little synopsis as, a couple of highlights and what you're looking to do next year and all that sort of stuff.
Sure, just some highlights of this past year. There were some big planning projects we got involved with. We got the Hazard Mitigation Plan finished up. That's the plan that FEMA requires that we have to have. Of course Nancy Durfee was very involved with that as well. It was pretty much the two of us working with a consultant to get that done. We're now working on an open space plan and that's another plan that helps with getting money. If we have that, we are eligible for certain kinds of grants to improve recreation facilities, to also buy open space. And it's a program that's been used in the past. If there are any purchases of open space, it supplements the CPC, so, you know, it is a good thing to have and we're, I'd say we're a good three-quarters of the way through that open space plan. And we've had a couple of public meetings, we got good attendance, about 25 people at each one of them, some good dialogue. And we're really stretching the consultant's money pretty well. We had a lot of help actually from recreation and conservation with doing some ADA assessments of the sites that they use, the open space properties and also the recreation sites. They had someone from the Commission on Disabilities go out with, I think it was your wife actually, and really get into the exact size of the pathways and whether a wheelchair could fit and all of that. One of the main things we do is support the planning board and of course, along with that, there are a lot of public service kind of activities. We get a lot of butters to projects with questions and a lot of concerns, a lot of concerns about stormwater. Even with the stormwater bylaw, we still have issues coming up and we do use the consulting engineers, but I will also go out and make site visits and do some investigating so that the applicants don't have to pay for a consulting engineer if it's not really necessary. On the economic development, we've really supported that whole committee with getting some of the wayfinding started. We've got the wayfinding signs now in Cole Parkway and we will be doing more. We're gonna be doing building signs for the new library, the public safety complex. And there was a bit of discussion getting everybody to agree that we were all gonna have the branding that, you know, you all wanted to have, but everyone kind of got on board with that. We do the green communities, kind of the reporting and backup for those grants. We got scenic road signs that are gonna be going up. These are similar to what they have in Norwell. They've got a little curve on the top that says scenic road and there are about, oh, 10, 12 scenic roads in town and they're all gonna have these signs in different locations. DPW is gonna put them up, but the signs have been made and we have those. We've done a couple of new things this year with preserving some of the old houses in town or at least the look of the old houses. For instance, the house that was next to Morning Glories, it turned out that was really in too poor condition to save, but we had a historic preservation consultant come out and look at what the, the applicants for the new condominiums there were proposing and make sure it was really like historically correct and so on and we got, we got that kind of worked through that process. So it's kind of a smorgasbord, but that's the way it is.
So what's the big thing on the plate for next year?
I think the big thing for next year is developing a process for a master plan and that will be something where we will probably need to go to town meeting for some funds possibly, unless we can find some grants to cover that, but that will be something that is a big, like, public project where we get a lot of, hopefully a lot of ideas and input from people about what they want the town to really be and what they want the town to become and.
So there'll be an opportunity for people to get involved in that, in various committees to participate in it?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Great. Want to hit the numbers then we can ask your questions?
Sure.
So the budget last year was $140,000 and this year's $140,000?
Yeah.
So level funded? No major moves, just the regular increases in payroll and reduction in a few expense lines? Any questions for Maura? Great, Maura, thank you. Obviously you're juggling a lot of things, we appreciate it.
Okay.
And good luck with the master plan stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Good night, Laura.
Good Laura.
Next up is Conservation and Coastal Resources and that's $171. How are you guys doing?
Good. All right, just keep going. Hey Nancy.
Pat, Nancy, how are you guys doing?
How are you?
How are you guys?
Very good.
Nancy.
So, I don't, I mean, you both kind of work together, but also do things separately, so if you, if you both want to take a couple of minutes and just give us a quick overview of.
Okay. Yeah, right. A lot of the time is spent with regular activities of permitting and enforcement, but this year we spent a lot more time on open space issues and, you know, we have a lot of the parcels and we needed to get them developed so they can be used better. So we're looking at trails, as Laura mentioned, we talked about the ADA, getting some parking lots, we had somebody in there, so we've had that engineered. Paul Scott's done a lot of work on that, so hoping to have some spaces where people can park and utilize the trails. Also work with like the dog park people and the people in the North Situate Playground to try to, you know, have some other activities along with just open space trails and John had mentioned the place off of Clap Road. We've had that delineated and we're looking to see what's, what's available out there. to see what's, what's available out there. One of the other things, we had the FEMA maps changed this year, so we had, we incorporated that into our regulations. So we're covered as far as our community rating system and some of Nancy's programs. Laura chairs the DRT, the Development Review Team, and we meet every other week. And it's been really helpful the way we can kind of coordinate all the departments. We find out what's going on zoning, planning, health, coastal, and conservation. Every meeting surprises us. Things, oh, I didn't know you were working on that. Oh, this project's coming in. We all need to work on it. So that's been pretty helpful. And we actually brought some money in this year. We, a couple of years ago, we had come to you about minor activities permit and you approved that. And although a lot of the programs, a lot of the projects we use that money for is storm-related damage, there's no need to some of the residents. We've brought in money for minor projects that used to either be done without a permit or have to go through a full permitting for. So somebody has like a deck and the sauna tubes, you know, need to be replaced. We don't make them go through permitting, but because it takes a little bit of time, we do minor activity permit, bringing some revenue that way, so.
Pat, was that also, was that also to speed up, you know, the process so a homeowner could do a project?
Right. They can get it that day. Carol will issue through an email and we'll trust them for the check and they've been, we know who they are, so they do send the checks in.
Streamline things.
Yeah. There was over 100 of them last year, which, you know, those were projects that were either done on the weekends or just go through some...
Thanks.
And then we spent a lot, spent a lot of time working with Nancy on coastal issues. And we didn't have a coastal resource, obviously we'd be in a lot of trouble. So it's been really good.
Nancy?
Thank you. Thank you Patrick. As Laura mentioned, we worked together on the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which I was really tickled that we were able to roll that right to the date into the new five-year plan. And so now it's implementing that plan. And I'd like to, I like, I'm happy to say that we've actually done a fairly decent job of already implementing many of the activities in that plan. So I'm really confident that in five years, we'll have five, we'll have many more new activities to do because we've been successful. And that always looks good when you rewrite your plan, that you've actually done something with it. So I'm really happy to say that.
What's one of those examples Nancy?
Oh, yeah, your desk.
Okay, so, I just thought. No pressure.
I'll come back to that.
Okay.
All right. We also finished the coastal erosion assessment, which I feel is the blueprint for our future and helps us, helps guide the decision-making along the coast. I think that was probably one of the highlights for this department this year, trying to get that out there and, and really kind of formulating that idea for where each section is, what's wrong, what's going on there and, and some recommendations on how to fix that. So I was really very proud of that. The CRS rating was the big highlight. Woo! You know, giving, going from a Class 8 to a Class 7, especially now with the rates increasing for homeowners. I know it might be hard for them to maybe see that improvement, but they have to remember that it's, they're gaining 15% by the activities that are done not only by me, but by Patrick and by Laura and DPW. All of the departments working together create that ability for that, for the homeowner to get that, that discount.
That's huge.
The amount of work that the town put into that is...
It is. And it's across the board, so it helps, because then I get to work with everybody and that's really delightful because we have a great team. So, and it's really helpful.
I think that's worth kind of restating, just that it's a 15% savings on people's flood insurance rates.
That's right.
So that's enormous.
That's right. And that begins May 1st. So that should, they should start to see that savings very shortly. And it may feel very, very good as they see that it will, their premiums are increasing.
And that's really rare. I don't think any other towns had it.
We're the first, yeah, we're the first town in Massachusetts.
To get a seven?
Get a seven, yeah. And we can't, as it stands right now, we can't go to a six because of our building codes. They have to upgrade the building codes in order for us to be able to apply for a six. They said we were very close to being a six, but because of the building codes, we, we couldn't get to that level. So that has to change.
Obviously the state building code is regulated from the Commonwealth, is what I'm saying.
Right.
So nobody in the Commonwealth probably could get the six.
No one can. None of the other communities can either. That's right.
And, and we're the only town that has a seven in the whole state.
As of right now.
Right.
I think we have a few hot on our tails down in, down on the Cape, but for right now we're the only seven.
That's phenomenal.
You're the leaders.
That's right. We also received a grant this year and we're beginning to work on the Hammerock Beach and Doon Nourishment and Road Elevation conceptual plans. We'll have our first public meeting on March 28th, location to be determined. So I'm trying right now to get the location for that meeting, but we encourage all, all residents on Hammerock who are interested or other residents who are interested in what we're doing to please attend and give their feedback. This is the time, as we're developing the conceptual plans, we want to hear their feedback and their concerns right up front before we get too far into the process. So I've also been working on the South River Dredge Project over this past year, helping Steve Moan down at the Harbor Master. The reason is because I want that, I want the material to put it back out on the beach. So I worked closely with Stephen on, on the South River Dredge Project permits. So that's in the works still. We finished the alternatives, alternatives analysis. The town did it and surprised, and gave that to the consultant. So that, because they didn't get enough funding really to do all the work, we're providing some of the heavy lifting to help them. So that's, so that's done. They now have, Army Corps and DEP have the plan for sediment analysis. So we should hear shortly about that.
So is your intent Nancy to put it on the beach or is your intent to put it on private property or, or both?
Well, our intent is to put it out in front of the homes on Central Ave, but of course that requires an easement. So I'm actively working with the homeowners in order to gain those easements. So we, we, I've just finalized 14 elevation projects that, I don't know if Laura's still here, but Laura put in a grant in 2013, which helped get my position funded. And I just finished 14 elevation projects. Woo, woo, yes. Now 14 homeowners are safe from, from flooding. It was an extremely interesting process. Homeowners have been very patient, working with federal, state, and local partners to elevate your home is very frustrating and it's slow. And I applaud them for sticking with me and getting right to the end. So that was good. So, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
Just to get to the numbers real quick. Last year's budget was 172. This year's budget is 197. A lot of that increase is because the grant went away that, that funded your salary. To me, it's a no-brainer. I mean, you just rattle off, you just saved 14 people's homes from flooding. You got everybody a 15% discount on their flood insurance and you get five times the grants for the town that you, that will pay you. So...
Actually, it's 500. Nancy, how much have you brought in in grant money in the last two years?
About eight.
Eight million.
Eight million dollars you brought in and you get paid 6 million dollars. So it works out. Pretty good for the town.
Tell Brooks not to print that, though he's stealing.
So I have no problem with that, that budget line going up. Any other questions on any line items?
No.
No.
Well, thank you both for all the great work you're doing. Thanks for, oh, hold on one second. Question?
Well, it's not a country rate. Any timeframe on dredging for the South River? I know it's working, but just any...
Right. So right now we're working towards getting the permits. We're hoping with, you know, and literally I'm really like hoping fall we'll have the permits and then we'd have that time of year restriction. So we'll probably try to get it underway as soon as possible. So hopefully within a few months from that, we will get it rolling. So that's my hope. But keep, keep posted if you're, if you're interested, just...
We're struggling so much right now. We almost have trouble getting into the South River now because of the turbulence, you know why?
So we did attempt, they did some sediment topography sampling at the opening and they found that the channel markers are in the low, in the wrong location. So Coast Guard is responsible for removing those and setting them in the appropriate location because it is deep enough. It just, they found that the markers were in the wrong place. So we're not going to have to worry on that very, very, you know, opening, but as you get further up the river, absolutely you're, you're going to have problems.
Great. Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Next up is Board of Health, Budget Number 510. Are you guys good to keep going?
Yes.
Jennifer, good evening.
Jennifer, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Other than the 20,000 SEPT plans that you have to approve every month, tell us a little bit about what, what your highlights of the year are and what your goals are for next.
Sure. So as you know, we're a very diverse department and we cover approximately 13 topics, some of which have seasonality to them. But all year round, we cover a good half dozen to eight different topics. In the past fiscal year, some of the things that I'm most proud of include some of the work being done by our public health nurse. She works a couple of days a week and does a tremendous amount in a very short period of time. She offered five flu clinics, providing approximately 400 flu shots to residents. Her clinics included weekdays, weekends, evenings, town hall, and elsewhere across the town, both north and down by the coast, trying to pick different locations. She also had the Dana Farber mammography van come to town, both in the spring and the fall. So 27 women, or 26 women receive screening level mammograms from Dana Farber. So you can't get any better than Dana Farber. And I'll use the opportunity to say it's coming back. It's coming back to Situate on April 13th from 8 to 3:30. It's going to be hosted at St. Luke's, so just across the street from here, pretty good visibility. The advertising has just begun, so we just have the logistics worked out. But any questions, our public health nurse can answer them. And then all of the appointments, which are so easy to make, get made right through Dana Farber. They work with your insurance companies, so you don't have to do a lot of the legwork. So it's a really, really positive service and we hope to increase the numbers. It can provide 40 mammograms a day. So it offers a lot of opportunity. Another thing that I'm really proud of is we issue tobacco permits and we did a round of sales compliance checks in coordination with Situate Facts and Situate Police Department. So it's just kind of a good way to make sure that our 21 community is checking IDs to make sure that those compliance, the compliance is being met. I'm also working with the Situate Public Schools or have been working with Situate Public Schools on the grant program that Mass DEP offered to evaluate lead in school drinking water. So we applied to be part of the program last summer. We were accepted into the program late last fall, early winter. We've completed all the sampling. All the results are in. We have a public meeting coming up next week with the school committee and the school community. So that was a really nice opportunity.
Is that during their school committee meeting?
It's, it's open for the school community.
Yeah.
It's being held at the library, the Situate High School Library, 7 o'clock next Monday evening. So it's, it's a public meeting. It's not the school committee meeting. It's a public meeting for the school community.
Gotcha.
So that's been a really, a really nice program to be a part of. It's a wonderful program that DEP offered. It's all grant funding. So all of the sampling analysis and time has been their funding and our time. So it's been a great program. Another thing that I've been working on in collaboration with so many other departments in the town is the Situate Hoarding Response Team. We basically reformed ourselves in 2014 at about the time I started. We are now in our third grant year. Mass Housing provides small grants to task force, task forces and groups that work on this issue in their communities. The grants are small, but we do an awful lot of work with them. Our first grant year, we got $2,000 in funding. We're now up to $3,000 in funding. The maximum funding, I believe, available per grantee is $4,000. With that, we've had a public education forum last fall, which was attended by several folks in the South Shore community. And we actually had somebody come from the North Shore for the event. That was followed up by the first of its kind on the South Shore, facilitator-led support groups to help folks that are struggling with this issue. We have just concluded another round of support groups, facilitator-led. With each, with each group progressing so that new skills are learned and new issues are addressed, we hope to be able to continue receiving grant funding in the year ahead so that we can continue to offer those services, continue to offer public education programming and any other resources that are asked of us. We are now only one of two task forces on the South Shore. So we receive a lot of inquiries, not only from Situate, but from folks who live in other communities that don't have their own local resources. So we serve folks even beyond Situate. And then another thing that I've been working on is environmental releases. We've had a few environmental releases or long-term environmental sites. So I've been working very closely with DEP as well as the licensed site professionals who are responsible for initiating and continuing mitigation and cleanup. So I've been working on those sites, making sure that we receive the documentation we need, that the cleanup is proceeding in a timely fashion if it's a small release, or, or that monitoring is continued for larger releases. So that's been really good. It, it goes back to my original schooling and my initial background. So it's nice to kind of keep my, my feet into that area and work with colleagues at the state on that kind of thing.
Right.
So those are some of the things we've been doing.
We do a lot.
It's a lot.
It's varied. That's the thing that's interesting. You know, you're kind of going from one category to another discipline. It's not necessarily all related.
Septic to food to pools to camps. So all over the lot.
To oil, or not oil. I'm thinking of the environmental oil when he is what I'm thinking of, but that's...
So your budget last year was 179,000. This year's 178,000. Once again, another level funded budget. Not much changing in it. So... So I don't have any questions on, anyone have any questions on the numbers?
Any restrictions with what you can do with the budget, you know, anything or...
With our grant funding, the one concern that I had had was that we have another grant, which is our emergency preparedness grant. We're in the fifth year of a five-year cycle and when the budget documents were being prepared back in December, there was an initial concern that we were going to not have another budget period where we would get grant funding. We have a conference call with our statewide partners and Region 4A and B tomorrow where we will learn whether we receive grant funding. And it looks pretty positive as of now. And it actually looks fairly positive that we might be level funded. So that will allow us to continue some of the departmental-specific emergency preparedness activities that we've been working on for the first five years of the grant. So the thing that I was most concerned about looks like it will work out fine through, through state and CDC funding.
Okay, good.
Great.
Just want to commend Jen, the professionalism and organization and compliance she's brought to that office in the last two years is phenomenal.
Thanks Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you Jen.
Have a good night.
The last department budget this evening is veterans. And that's number 543.
Night.
Don, how are you?
Good. Good evening.
Very well. If you want to rattle off a few things that you, your big best accomplishments and what you're looking to do next year?
Sure. So the Veterans Department again is, again, we're always very busy, which is a good thing. A lot of fully developed claims coming in, which is, again, I've gotten a lot of feedback. The veterans or their, their wives coming in and thanking me, just how it's changed their lives. And that's been a good feeling. And we're going to continue to do that.
And just so people understand, that's you getting the benefits that they're entitled to and helping walk them through the process of...
Of the claim.
Of the claim and of the... Of the claim, and of the.
And a lot of them have been, you know, they may be back from Vietnam up to the present, so they're just starting to come forward and understand their benefits, which has been great. So, that's been most of the work that we've been doing over the last probably two years, and I see that increasing, which is, again, a good thing.
So, Sean, you may, how many, or John, remember way back when, we only had like under 10 people that were receiving claims from the town, and what are we up to now?
Well, there's two different, there's two different claims now. The Chapter 115, I think, is what you're alluding to right now, and that's, we were up, we were up in, like, say, 22, 24 over the past year. Unfortunately, we've lost five people that have passed away. So, it's one of those things that fluctuates. I see, just from the phone traffic and the foot traffic in my office, that that's gonna, again, increase. So, that's the Chapter 115, that's through the state, it's for the FPL, anyone under the poverty line there. There's a program out there, if they come in and see me again, I'll do the paperwork and vet them. This is reimbursed back to the town from the state at a 75% rate, and that's that one line item that you see in my budget under subsistence. The other one that also is reimbursed back to is the care of veterans' grave, and that's for all the flagging of the graves, so that also is reimbursed back at a 75% rate. As far as going forward, I see just with what's been going on with our PSAs that we put out earlier, that we want to focus now on, again, just the benefit part of it, so we're gonna look at probably what benefits people are coming in seeking, and maybe doing PSAs on those, just so we can focus on those and let them know the process, and that's not a, like I said, the other day, I think I had someone walk in, I did a hair and disability, I think I did all the paperwork, probably under 10 minutes. The gentleman was just floored.
That's great.
So, and that's what I'm, we got the new assistant in there, and right now, we're ramping her up on the MUNA side of it, the Webbismas side, which is the state side, so we have the two computers that have to pretty much reconcile each other, so she's doing great on that, and so I want to lead into, again, having her start taking these applications, so it's been working out great.
Do you have any idea how many, like, the number of veterans that we have in town who don't realize what benefits they could be eligible for, at least there's any type of tracking that?
There is no tracking, and, again, outreach and word of mouth, which I can see right now, over the last five years that I've been there, has just increased incredibly. People come in and just say, you know, "I was just down the dump, and so-and-so said this, and I came in and saw you. Is there anything I have?" I'll sit down with them, and sure enough, you know, but as far as reaching out to them, again, it's all by PSAs through either the state, the federal, ourselves locally, and then just talking to other vets. And that's the same with the widows, too. Sometimes there's widows of vets that are sitting out there that don't realize that they have benefits.
Have you done a, and forgive me if I didn't see it, but have you done one on SCTV?
Yes.
You have, okay, so, okay, good.
And it may be good to get, I know you've made a big, I mean, that's why we didn't have, that's why we only had two or three people five years ago, and it's up to the twenties, but maybe some posters or something at the, you know, the veterans' organizations, or even at the dump, or the village market, post office, you know, just so people are aware of what the benefits they can get. The numbers.
Even with the signboard that we have, you know how, all of a sudden, the DPW signboard occasionally, because you'll get attention, people might read it.
It's a nice idea to do that, maybe like around.
Even the doctors' offices. The doctors' offices, or the. So, last year's budget was $205,000, this year's $198,000, it went down a little bit. A lot of that is of your budget, 120 or so. 120,000 of it is the sustenance that you mentioned before, so it's a big chunk of your 220,000, or 205,000, sorry, and then just normal step increases and more cost of living increases.
Yeah.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
No.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you, Don.
You're breaking out.
So, that's the last monetary department budget we're doing tonight. We're gonna do the non-monetary warrants articles now, just preview those. A quick note is, you may notice that we don't vote these budgets at the end of all of these, because we wait until the end to make sure that it all matches the number that it has to match, and then at the end, that's where we'll write notes down in terms of what we think maybe changes in the budget, and we'll talk to Tricia about that and have a form about that in terms of adding things or taking things out, but that's the way the process goes. We have to see them all before we see if, well, I know Tricia's presenting one that's in line with the financial forecast, but, but that's why we wait till the end, in case we want to move money around. So, as I said, the next ones we're just gonna discuss, not vote on, but summarizes the non-monetary articles for town meeting.
This is just updated from the one you got February 21st, in terms of how the actual warrant shaping out with 18 articles. Obviously, well over 70% of them are the budget and enterprise fund budgets, and then the new ones that we've added are the temporary moratorium on the distribution, sale of recreational marijuana, as Nancy alluded to earlier, some changes to the municipal modernization law. So, we're gonna have a very long general bylaw to adopt that replaces that Article 2, which is the reauthorization of all the revolving funds we do every year. We actually have to create by bylaw. The good news is that we'll never have to have a warrant article again, because they'll be there, but.
For any, for any future revolving?
To create one as well.
Oh, okay.
And obviously, you can see the list there, we are creating a golf capital stabilization fund, another non-monetary one. You should have the draft warrant, hopefully, on March 14th meeting. We just got some language from Town Council today.
Right. So, can run through them real quick. FEMA LOMAR, $51,000, which is to look at the maps again, budget reconciliations, creation of a golf stabilization fund, capital stabilization fund, CPC administrative transfers, compensation for elected officials, the bylaws that Tricia just mentioned, capital improvement stabilization fund, planning and development, administrative code revision, is what's that? Number four.
The planning department position.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
The operating budget, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 enterprise funds, stabilization fund, excess of levy, CPC ones, Chapter 91, which is liability on, work on our waterways, and then the last one is the moratorium on the sale of recreational marijuana. Any questions on any of these?
No.
Pretty small.
A lot of routine ones.
Yeah.
You gonna be in the auditorium?
No. I don't think so.
No, not yet, just checking.
The building is available March 21st, but we don't have the bandwidth to be able to do town meeting in it. We're moderating, we need to walk through, we can't, we need to organize it. I don't have the time.
Okay.
We're tired, sorry, Don.
That's all right, just curious, that's all.
And the date of town meeting again?
It's April 26th, right?
Yes.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, 4/26. Great. Moving right along to old business, this is a discussion vote on the policy and ABC Advisory serving wine in private clubs. So, we talked about this last time, I think we were fine with it. I had a question about the corking fee.
Correct.
And I asked you to look into that, the way that it was written by the state, again, this is a, this is a state law that we have to put into our bylaw, that we have to put into our own bylaws.
Selectment policies.
Selectment policies, right, that allows people to, at private clubs, to serve wine.
Bring your own wine.
What's that?
Bring your own.
To bring your own wine, right, sorry. And Lorraine looked into it further, and the corking fee of a mandatory $30 per bottle, I guess, is if you want to leave, if you want to take that bottle home with you, an open, an un-open, no, an open bottle.
Fee charged for open bottles of wine that are not consumed, not finished, and to remove them from the premises.
And who sets that rate?
Well, they can, but it says it has to be at least $30, $30.
It's a state. It's a state, that was my question, I was reading through everything, that was high. It's ridiculous.
It makes absolutely no sense, but.
State law, and it was an ADCC letter that was sent out to us. So, we are just revising the selectment policy to reflect the.
Right.
So, I took, from our conversation today, Tony, in your handouts, I took the board's policy, and added in parentheses, as we discussed, next to the ADCC coverage, fee charged for open bottles of wine that are not consumed and to be removed from the premises, so it's clear for, you know, any person.
Right.
They just gotta know they gotta drink it up.
Completely contradicts itself in the sentence before, but.
Basically what it means.
What?
Drink up.
That's right, yeah, I was gonna leave.
Pour it out.
Pour it out.
Great. Any other questions on this policy? It only impacts, I think, is there six or seven private clubs? I know you had it in the write-up, Yacht Club, Citro Country Club.
Yeah, the ADCC sends out their own advisory to licensees, so they would be responsible to notify all of the club license holders. Do you want me to read the club license holders?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, that would be Hadley Country Club, Citro Country Club, Citrite Yacht Club, Citrite Racket, and Fitness, VFW Post, and those are all the licensed clubs currently in the town.
Right. So, I need a motion, I think?
Would the Board of Selectmen approve the revised brown bagging selectment policy 59-17 to update the new law regarding wine in private clubs?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four to zero. The next item is a discussion vote for a board and committee appointment for the Republican Town Committee Warden. This is, ah, sorry, through the Republican Committee, and they elected this person, and Kathy Curran.
Kathy Downing?
Downing.
No, I thought, didn't Kathy Curran have to give us the?
I'll comment, this did go to Kathy Curran, and was submitted to us for approval, it's, you know, it's already provided by the Republican Town Committee, Ron Robinson, who served for, how many years, Ron, did you serve, seven or nine, or many years, many, many years, who's served as our Republican Town Election Warden, who is retiring from that position, thank you for your service, and Kathy Downing is the new nominee, who could not be here today, because she had a party meeting, she had to.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
Oh, she's an excellent choice.
Right.
Motion? Move to appoint Kathy Downing as a Situate Republican Election Warden for a one, a term of one year, or until successor is named.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, yes, sir.
Why is it just one year, and why wouldn't it be?
Can you just, I'm sorry, say your name and address real quick?
I'm sorry, Ron Robinson, 14 Butter Milk Circle, current warden.
Why is it one year?
Yeah, why isn't it just until a replacement would be named in the future, unnamed future?
We've actually renewed you annually, Ron, with all the election markers, you get, you get.
That answers the question.
Yeah. I think it's annual appointments, what it is, happens.
Which I, which you will get in the next couple weeks.
And we added until a successor's name, because that may mean it goes a little longer than a year, that's why.
Carry on.
Thank you.
Thank him.
Did we vote on that?
Yes, we have a.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four to zero.
Thank you.
John?
Thanks.
And then some correspondences, excuse me while my tablet catches up with us.
I'm doing the same.
The first one was actually what I mentioned earlier with the beautification committee, this pamphlet that they have, which shows all of the people who actually take care of these lots.
And my dog.
And your dog.
Gotta give my dog a shout out. She's in the picture.
Oh.
Carries the watering can.
Okay, the first one I want to mention is that we got a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development that verified that the house that we built over on Stockbridge Road has been incorporated into our affordable housing group. So, we are one less house away from getting rid of 40Bs.
And I'd like to thank the Affordable Housing Trust for really staying on that. Steve Irish has done a phenomenal job just following up on that, and finally getting that piece of property online to market and get into somebody's, somebody, get somebody moved in there, so it's great, so thank you to them.
Right.
They did a lot of work. It's a long process, it's, it was an awful grueling process, so they really need to be commended to sticking to it.
Great. We also received a letter from the Town of Conway, that I, it was addressed to Mr. Hutul, so I'll take a second to read. On Saturday night about 7:30 PM, an EF1 tornado came through the Town of Conway, causing substantial property and tree damage, and loss of electricity, cable, and phone service. Miraculously and thankfully, there were no serious injuries or loss of life. On Sunday morning, Conway resident Trisha Van Kezey approached me and volunteered to step in for our town administrator, who was on vacation to assist with the, excuse me, was on vacation, to assist with monumental task of managing the multiple state and local agencies who are pouring into the town to help our local officials. I swore Tricia in as acting town administrator. Tricia's experience and expertise in an emergency situation became immediately obvious to me and our emergency services personnel. Her assistance and contribution to the town during the critical initial recovery period was invaluable for the smooth and effective operations of multiple state and local agencies tasked with ensuring the safety and welfare of our residents. Our Board of Selectmen, our emergency services personnel, and mostly our residents owe a debt of gratitude to you, your Board of Selectmen, and your residents, for allowing Tricia to take a vacation day on Monday, February 27th, to continue to assist our town with recovery operations. With our sincerest appreciation and thanks, it's signed by John O'Rourke, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen in the Town of Conway. I saw pictures of the event, it was, I don't think the state of Massachusetts has many tornadoes, and I think they were very fortunate that Tricia was out there, and I'm proud of the fact that you were able to assist them and use the stuff that you learned in the Town of Situate to help another community. So, thank you very much for doing that.
Did it come close to your house, Trish?
Yes, it did.
So, it must have been.
So, there were, I think, three houses that were demolished, right?
Six.
Six.
Yeah. Does it sound like a train, like they say it does?
Two, a barn, a house, and six roofs, and the church was structurally compromised, in addition to a couple thousand trees of property.
Wow. Thank you very much, Tricia.
The next.
Thank you for allowing me to do it. Thank you for allowing me to do it.
The next note is from National Grid, and we're gonna.
I know you're not gonna read the next one, but I think it, Mr. Chair, may I, sorry, the MMA and the Mass Municipal Association also commended Trish with a special article that they wrote in their publication, so I think that's worth noting as well.
Yeah, no, I.
That's a little hacky, too. You don't need to reiterate it, because it's about the same, same issue, but they also called it out as well.
Thank you, I shifted over the back.
What do you do with these things?
The next item is National Grid, they sent us a notice that they're gonna be coming through town over the next year, which they send us every year, and they're gonna be trimming trees and stuff to clear off their power lines. They sent us a map that we can't quite understand in terms of where they're gonna do this, but I would recommend that residents, that they look at the map and see if they're going to come down your street and cut your trees down, because they don't ask. You go to work one day, and you come home, and your trees are down. So, pay attention to that, so that you can talk to them and make sure that they're cutting the trees on their property, and that, you know, that it's done properly.
You know, can we, can we have, can we check in, because, on this, because it looks to me that it's just that major, what do you call the big high tension wire that runs through the town?
Yeah, Tony, Tony had the same concerns.
That's what it looks like, that's what's done.
Actually reach out.
Yeah, we're going to find the map and see.
Need more information for your Tuesday night meeting, or we actually need someone to come in.
Who's that tree warden now? Is that Al?
George Story.
George Story, that's right.
He's retired, I think.
But is, did he stay on?
He's going to be the temporary person. We can talk. Yeah, I think George has been doing it before.
It'd be important to get him on.
It looks like it's just the high tension wires from the...
Yeah, only I know because they've come down 3A and they've just, they've come down and they just cut and keep going. Anyways, we'll get more details on that. Lastly, there's an attachment from the Council on Aging that's listing some of the programs that they're doing. They're doing a 12-week program that kind of assists, it's just different classes in terms of how to, seniors can get involved in different aspects of their life, health, behavior, peer support, this sort of stuff. So that's, that'll be going on in the fall for 12 weeks.
And they have an event that is taking place...
Oh, that's right.
On this Friday, 3:10. So it's an event, Evening of Irish Music and Song, it's at the River Cove, from 6:00 to 8:00, $7 in advance, music by the trio from Cape Cod, Rose Clancy, Fiddler, Bob Dunlap, Kathy Taylor. Sounds like it's going to be a fun time, so they're hosting that as well.
The next thing is approval of some minutes.
Would the Board of Selectmen approve the meeting minutes for February 21st, 2017?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other business?
I abstained because I wasn't here. I read them, but I wasn't here.
Any other business?
Just to remind you, the board, that the Capital Planning Committee is meeting tomorrow night here in this room, and they are voting their recommendations.
Tomorrow night, they're voting?
Okay.
They meet last week?
They did.
Sean, you were there.
Sean, you were there.
Was I there? I've lost the whole week in my life, so...
Yeah, you were there.
Okay, I just wanted to see if they didn't, if they didn't...
They did till Monday, which is why.
Yeah, okay.
They're back to their regular schedule.
Brown Bag Law?
No, they, they didn't post in time, so I didn't know if they did something while I had missed it.
The only thing I was going to say is that the Waterways, let's see, as you know, the consultant, Charlie Cristallo, had his recommendation in his report, so Waterways got it ahead of time, distributed to the members, commission, made it public, had a meeting, part of Charlie's, if I misspeak, Tricia will jump in, part of Charlie's contract was to attend one of the meetings. So the commission thought it was best if they discussed what they read, had questions, the chair sent out those questions to Charlie, he responded. So at the last Waterways meeting, they, they went down, you know, the list of his recommendations, really highlighting on a couple of big things, and had to be with, had to do with the age of, you know, a youngster being on the list if he was under 18, and when did he turn 18, and should he stay on the list, should he not stay on the list? And the other thing was ownership of the moorings, all right? You know, John and I own a boat together, it's, you know, but I'm listed first and 51% and, you know, those are the things that bubbled up. So the couple of questions went back to Charlie, or they were going to, you know, fine-tune a couple of things, and they're going to be making their recommendation to this board possibly our next meeting, so these things can, you know. You know, again, just to remind you guys, it was, a lot of people have been waiting on the waiting list, trying to get that list to turn over, trying to get, you know, people on moorings that have been waiting for a long time, basically is what it's, what it's been all about, but I think the group as a whole thought his report was very, very good, and so...
Yeah, I think David Freeman said that at the last meeting.
Okay. All right, did I miss anything? Okay.
The only thing I'll add is our sports report, our high school sports, our boys and girls basketball team made the playoffs, both of them made the playoffs, both of them won their first playoff game, and they unfortunately both had to play very high seeds in their second round, and they both lost their second round games. But they had great seasons, and, you know, thank you for the entertainment and the coaching and the players. Our hockey team, who's ranked number one in Division 2, is playing right now down in Gallo, and...
What's the score?
I don't know what the score is, my son didn't test one.
It's only starting at 7:30.
Yeah, so it's only 45 minutes long, but they beat the previous team 9 to 0. So hopefully Coach Breen and the players can bring a win home, and I think this is a semifinals, so if they win, they'll be in the sectional finals probably this weekend, so. And that's it. Baseball's around the season, around the corner. Great, so what we're going to do now is, oops, she just texted me, Cituit scored one minute into the game, so 1-0 Cituit. So now we're going to adjourn and sign documents, so can I have a motion?
So move.
Second, second by Mr. Harris. Oops, hold on for one second. Yes, sir.
Could I address the board, please?
Concerning, no, well, just tell me what it is before...
I've got what you feel, 196 all over the back of the road.
Yeah, no, I mean, we had an, we had walk-in session earlier, so you can't...
I came in at 10 minutes to 7.
Yeah, the meeting started at 6.
I'm supposed to be at 7.
The meeting started at 6 tonight, and it's, also, it starts at 6 tomorrow, next week.
Can I address the board, please?
No, you can't, not at this time.
I'm a veteran.
Yep, we just can't do it right now, there's a, there's a period, there's a period for it, and you can come back next week and, during the walk-in period.
The last meeting...
Sir, we've adjourned, we've adjourned the meeting, so, thank you.
A citizen of this town was denied his right to free speech. I'm a veteran. I fought and sacrificed for those rights. I won't let that happen in this town.
Okay.
It shouldn't happen in any town. The man whose rights were violated deserves an apology from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Can I motion to adjourn?
You're going into executive session.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
The proper motion.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, that being the fire department.
Second.
Great.
Not, are we going to return to open session?
We're not.
Not to return.
So move the Board of Selectmen go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and that's the fire.
To the roll call vote?
Yes.
Mr. Biniani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.